We ready, James? Jackie, are we recording? Thanks. All right, call us back in the regular session at six fifty-one. Do I hear a motion as a result of the executive session?
I move that we direct our city administrator to continue negotiations with Tower Point.
Okay, do your second. Which made by Council, Kansas, saying by Council Coker. Any discussion of that motion? All right, the motion was to move to direct the city administrator to continue negotiation with Tower Point to purchase the Verizon lease. Jackie? Council Coker. Jackie, could you go for a vote, please?
Council Chairman?
I.
Council Ver.
I.
Council Canyon.
I.
Council Hollis.
I.
Mayor Ketchum.
I.
I.
All right, motion passes. Is Council presented online by chance? Yeah. Okay, let's see here. All right, moving on to item eleven, business from the City Council, eleven point one, WAC Community Survey Results. James, is that you or is Trish online or?
It's a bunch of us, so I'll give an overview. Fish Maxfield and Kim Smith of Consort Consulting finished the WAC community survey months ago. They've already presented to the WAC committee. And now it's going to be presented to Council and Council Pollitt, Chair of the WAC Committee, kind of do an overview. We have Jackie start the slideshow. Which should appear up here. And we will be publishing this on the city website as well. I think that's to be handwritten, isn't it?
All right, so you guys should have all got this on your packet. Those in the audience, this is the survey done by Consor. Consor was hired by the Southern Lamont Collaborative and they partnered with the city's subcommittee for the redevelopment of the Lamont Activity Center. And I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna do the entire presentation that Trish did, but I'm kinda gonna go through it slide by slide just to give you guys an idea of all the work that they put into it. So on page, slide three, you'll see kind of a picture there. It's gray and black and white. That is actually a blue box, so their team came up with these blue boxes. And then our committee helped them put them throughout the city. I think there was ten altogether in community places, so that was where to put your paper hard copy. Next slide kinda goes over when they met with the committee, some of the things, the goals and objectives that we initially set out. You can see those there. And just so you guys know, Trish Maxfield put this presentation together, so these are kind of the things we identified that we wanted to work with them on. And slide five. These are the places that, the ways that we got the survey out. So the blue boxes that I mentioned earlier, that was where to put your hard copy of your survey. We did some event tabling at different events going on in throughout the month of July. I think it started the very, very beginning of July, so not a super long time. They provided a fact sheet flyers, they put out a couple news releases, sent out partner emails, social media posts, and then most everybody on the committee went and shared those posts, inserts in the water bill webpage, and then I did a small little virtual tour of what the WAC looks like right now. So I think they hit pretty well on trying to get you know, a good, good broad overview of our community. You'll see there right in that little starburst kind of thing. Two hundred and fifty-nine of the surveys were, came from online, so mostly social media. And then there was a total of four hundred and forty-two that they got back. So next slide. Number six, you'll see that the social media hit thirty-five percent, so it was by far the most effective way to get out to the community. And then the ones below are they track the percentage of how people replied to them to get a good idea. And if anybody wants a hard copy of this, like James was saying, we'll have this on the websites too. Okay.
This is intercept serving.
Oh, you know what? I don't know, but when we get to the end, Tricia is on and she can answer that if you want to write that down.
Yes, it's a different person. But I can.
Okay. Um, so like I said, most effective was social media. Uh, next one, page slide seven. So this is just more of a breakdown by percentage of the demographics, I believe. Of that prior slide.
Yeah, on that one, on the most effective tools by key audience, I think it's really important for all of you to look at how each of those key audiences was engaging with the survey by collector is what we like to call them. I think it's really, it's there you see like fifty-five percent for families. And then it's like split for low income where you have twenty-five percent social media, twenty-five percent intercept serving. And so depending on what audience you want to reach, you want to change up how you're trying to reach them.
Thanks, Tricia. Do you want to take questions now or at the end?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer Dawn's question that she had. And then obviously, as we're going, if you guys want to ask questions, that to me makes more sense than having to flip back through slides. So intercept serving is just our way of getting out in front of people, catching them kind of as they're passing by. It's more the lay public that might be not be engaged in these other channels. So setting up a booth outside of Raze, that's intercept serving, saying, hey, do you have a second to chat about the WAC, that kind of thing.
So my second question would be on this slide in particular. If someone was disabled and also low income or also a senior, could they have marched both?
Yes, under this one specifically, we would have counted them separately. So that said, you know, if they responded through the blue box station and they're disabled eighteen percent would, you know, if they might also be in the low in, low income bracket, yes.
No.
All right, so next page. Next slide. This is the zones here. What breaks it down by percentage of where they received the most surveys. Any questions for Trish on that? All right, next slide should be page number ten. So this is kind of the big one, the survey results, where the percentages lie. So emergency disaster response, I thought that was kind of nice to see that there rising to the top. That was something that our subcommittee identified early on, that we wanted to make sure that the building had a really good EOC. So have had so many natural disasters here. And then just to see the breakdown here, I think it's really important where our community what the importance are. What is an EOC, emergency operating center? So one of the things that we discussed in that meeting when Tricia presented was that a lot of these, the things that we had identified really fell into these categories and it helped put that into good perspective.
What's, what's the difference between very important and important?
I knew that question was coming. So what's, what's really important here? No pun intended. Is, so very important is showing the degree to which people find something important. However, we like to lump together important and very, very important because no matter what, it's still important to the community. So if you move forward, I apologize, I don't have any other synonyms, you guys. So when you lump them together like that, you're saying there's seventy-nine percent of the population that took this survey, which is a representative sample. We had four hundred and forty-two responses of the five thousand within the, the Oak Ridge community. You're looking at a plus or minus margin of error of less than ten percent. I believe it is actually around five percent, which is really great. So seventy-nine percent of folks who took this survey, that's how many people are going to support moving forward with community and social activities and so forth. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Right, next page. Again, more breakdown. And like I said, our committee agreed that these categories looked representative of what we were kind of thinking they would fall in. So one of the things people on the committee said was that really wasn't a big surprise that came out of it like, oh, we can't believe this came out of it. It was really, everybody thought it was well done and that the answers were pretty representative of our committee. So I know that was one of the things important that using the outreach we would that this would make it really possible for the community to be really inclusive to the broader community. Next slide. There's any questions about that? Please ask Trish. More breakdown of the demographics there. Is there any surprises here? You guys are? Trish, did you have anything to add to these slides?
You know, looking at this, you really have top four or four categories that are rising to the top, which is really emergency disaster response, community social activities, health, medical care and human social care with the caveat that for families, it's a little bit different and they're top four, you know, they tend to prioritize early childhood education and the community social activities higher than some of the others.
All right, uh, next slide fourteen. So the next one. They also looked, you can show that title, so the backup just, there we go. So they also kind of identified some, some things that were missing from our community and reasons that people in our community go to Eugene for. And yeah, I'll know usually grocery shopping is the big one. So it was kind of nice to see that there.
And folks are curious about the other reasons. It is in the full report, there's an interesting statement.
Oh, you mean the people wrote in?
Yeah.
All right, next slide. So in this last one, um, Consor took all the input from the surveys and then this is just a couple ones that rose to the top for them and they put those there. They said there was only a few negative. We didn't see them, but sounds like the main priority of them were positives. It's good to know.
Yeah, and in the full report, we included all of the written responses. So if you're curious what those negative remarks are, or you want to go find where your remark is, you can, you can go there.
Is that the one that's in our packet or is it the one?
Yeah, you guys should have gotten the full thing with the appendices. Yeah.
Yeah. That is available also online, so city websites, to the city council.
And next one is slide seventeen. So next steps, um, I was hoping that this council seems obvious, this council would approve for it to be posted on the website if it isn't already. And then we asked James also to share that out on all of our social media and get that out there as well as counselor. So that those results that community can see. And also a big thanks to Fisher Max Field and I'm so sorry, I forgot Kimmy's last name, but Kim, Sue, Sue?
Loop. Yeah, thank you for that, Trish. Yeah, we had such a great time working with you all and, and I'll, you know, just to share with the public who's here, this report will really help the funding committee go out and source grant dollars, which is obviously kind of what this WAC renovation project has been hinging on. We know that the city budget doesn't really allow for going out and renovating a massive building, so this is great for them to be able to move forward with grant requests.
Thanks, Trish, and I know you didn't do this primarily, you did a lot of pro bono, I know, but I appreciate your, your efforts on this.
Of course, I love Oak Ridge and those of you who know me know that I'm a very strong volunteer, so I was happy to do it. It was a really fun project. And Consor, at the end of the day, gets to add it to their portfolio, so.
Yeah. Any councils have a last question for Trish before we move on? Okay, James, and this is already posted, right? So we don't.
It's in the agenda packet. It hasn't been posted individually because I've got a concept to see it first.
Okay, and I don't, I don't think you need a motion to post that, too.
Correct.
Okay, good. All right, thanks again, Trish. Moving on to eleven point two, which is the Oak Ridge Trails Alliance OIP lease proposal. James?
Mayor, if we could actually do eleven point three first, Michelle Emmens. Five minutes away.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to eleven point three and come back to point two. Eleven point three is the warming center at Green Waters Community Building fee waiver request, James.
Right, so Kathy Justin Nichols is here and she is heads up the volunteer organization that has been running the warming center. Used to operate in the last, last year operated in the Greenwater Park Community Building. That is my best option again this year. She has proposed that council allow the warming center to be open five months, November through March, from six PM to seven AM on nights when it's going to be a little freezing. Last year, which is remembers it would be bad winter, you know, fifty nights. I'm suggesting some minor changes to that proposal. We're gonna, I'm gonna give Kathy a chance to, to give her opinion on it as well, but I think we should wait until December to open, rather than November, because it will save us forty dollars in insurance costs. We have to pay forty dollars per month to have insurance for people sleeping overnight in a building. Saves a little bit of money and also you know, less work for the volunteers, who I really appreciate it takes a lot of people to do that. I'm also suggesting that we start at eight PM rather than six PM for two reasons. One, less burden on the volunteers. Two, it will, it will allow for more rentals, paid rentals in space. Most events would probably get out by eight PM, six PM. There may be some people that want to rent the building. Again, these are just my opinions. It'll be up to council. Decision, and I'm also suggesting that only open it when it's going to be below freezing for hours or more. Think the way they run now, it's like if it's gonna dip below freezing, they open. I think if it's just below freezing for half an hour to an hour, we'll be able to survive. I'm just trying to remove the use of building. That's just my personal opinions. Problem is, so and I did promise that hosting opportunity.
Yep.
Free range to speak to this issue.
It's awesome.
Okay, bear with me. So you know, councilors, the volunteers at the Oak Ridge Farming Center are again asking you to consider our request. She used the Green Waters Community Building as a warming center when temperatures reached thirty-two degrees or below. We have before you the packet of our formal request. And I was going to read it, but I realized that it's public to see the whole request in the packet, correct? Yes, okay, so I won't read it. But I do want to respond to your recommendations. Changing opening time to eight PM instead of six PM to a more time for possible rental. He believes this would place us a burden on our volunteers by reducing our operating hours. And not opening that till eight PM in order to allow more time for rentals is not really a practical suggestion for three reasons. Last year, there was never a time when someone who wanted to rent the building was turned away because of the warming center. We do not have time locked out on the calendar that says this is just ours. We notify all since the decision is made to be open. We do that within twenty-four hours. We've been flexible and I believe we've worked well with the city doing changes as necessary and will continue to do so. A six PM start time works well for those who have a Friday meal. We provide a full dinner. Some of our volunteers go above and beyond with homemade bread, food and dessert. So it works really well to be able to allow them to do that. At eight PM, those that are homeless, I'm already telling them whether I just spend the night. They are already either in shelter or on a bench or in the tent and hoping to stay warm. Also asking them to come to the community building at eight PM, means they're coming down the highway. Six o'clock is a much more practical time. We have worked with the city to allow to, when there has been someone who really wants to rent it and cities rented it out, we do start later. It's a bit of a challenge, but we have worked with them. And I think we can continue to do that. We would ask of the city that if we notify the city that we are going to be using it, that no reservations after that time be accepted for that. I think that's a fair, a fair ask. Changing the duration to December through March to save four hundred dollars, totally agree. That's fine. I think this weather is going to be mild if I can get my crystal ball, but you know. So anyway, yes. This looks like plastic. And also if it turns out in February, it doesn't look like March is going to be wild. We would like to know as soon as possible, so we wouldn't have to be that remote to know. Only operating when we're forecasted to be below freezing for four hours or more. And what would be appreciated suggestions? The way we have currently been assessing our opening already takes into consideration there are times when we knew that it's going to be thirty-two degrees. Well, new is an interesting word, but we believed it would be thirty-two degrees for thirty minutes or an hour. And we have chosen not to open. And that usually happens like at six, three in the morning. So we have been in wise in our decisions that way. And I believe putting that in stone would be kind of unnecessary. We appreciate that the city administrator is including the city's strategic goals and agenda. This program is staffed by members of our community, citizens whose tax dollars are used upon the park. We are committed to helping provide a warm place when nights are freezing. As citizens of the community, we ask that the city help us make good on that commitment. When I attended meetings with this extreme weather group of light joint, we go around the table and we ask what can be, what, how can we help those warmers? What do you need? And by far, everyone means that says we need volunteers. We don't. I agree. We've done a couple, but we need this place. And that's what you're asking for that. In conclusion, I really would like to read something to you that I sent to our volunteers at the end of last season. I think it helps, helps put it in perspective. I told them, what an exceptional season of cold weather we have. Well, our first day open was December first. The first cold weather started with Thanksgiving. I thought I'd share some statistics to you to confirm what that you really did work the strategy, but you didn't. In December, we were open nine times, six consecutive days. January, we were open ten times, ten consecutive days. In February, we were open twelve days, including two full-time days. That is six consecutive days in a row. In March, we were open eleven days with nine consecutive days. We had done good work and I know that those who serve are appreciative of our efforts. I think of a conversation that I had with a gentleman one evening. Thanks, Trish, for saying this for providing this. And I told him that it was because of the city that we were able to do this. And he said how great it was that they was in the community building. It does feel like someone's with them, which is really nice. I told him it's welcome. And I added that he was worth it. His response was, go on now. It broke my heart, actually, when he said that. We have provided just a little bit of normalcy for people that are less fortunate than us throughout the winter. Then I think we're doing the job. We would love to do more, but our mission as a warming center is to just make sure people so whatever you do.
Thank you. Any questions?
We have two people from our committee here, Ken, I have two. And I'm Susan Hart, who is also available.
James, what do you?
My question is, I know you said you're doing pretty well on volunteers, but we use a few more and if so.
Always. James, thank you. Um, yes, we can always use more volunteers and our volunteers range from people who are willing to come and grab blankets and wash them for us. If people who are willing to spend the night and be with our, our group as we're open, people willing to provide food. People are willing to do some shopping. That would be awesome, too. So there's availability for that. And while I don't want to give out my phone number on Zoom, I'm happy to share it and where you can pause it.
How long are the shifts for overnight?
Well, we open, when we, we say we open at six, we actually begin working at six-thirty, but six to six-thirty allows us to get food into the kitchen and get it ready for people that are coming. So we have shifts better from six to
six to ten, ten to two, and then two o'clock on. Usually we have people that are ready to get out of the shelter by six o'clock, six-thirty. Seven o'clock, everything's gone. That especially, once it gets, before it's light, they have other places to go. And likewise, once it gets dark, they tend to need the immediate help. And if we were to delay starting until eight o'clock, we would actually put people they would get cold and have to, they would, they would not get the service they needed because they were trying to calm it down for themselves somewhere out there and, and then it ended up having to move in the middle of the night if they could. But once they get covered covered up and bed, they're good until, and then once the six o'clock in the morning, we wake them up and they're ready to get out. They're not looking for a home. They're looking for this place to get warmed during the crisis time of coldness.
Any counselors have questions of Kathy?
Um, my first actually question is for James. After listening to Kathy with the eight PM thing, be sure what's comfortable with that.
A little more comfortable. I, I just know that it's nice to have consistency. So I know she mentioned that they were very flexible last year. If there was a rental, it was going to go late and they would open late. I just I feel like if it was just eight PM, we wouldn't have to flex that ever if it was a rental. It's personal opinion, but I, these are my opinions aren't strong opinions, I think, just I thought it might be that way.
Yeah, I can understand though transportation at eight o'clock is going to be much harder than six PM. We all know the danger pushing a car or things like that along the highway at night, especially if you're asleep or anything on the highway. Because it can snow and it's not below that level. So, um, I just really wanted to say thank you for what you guys do. There's a lot of unsung heroes in Oak Ridge that do a lot of the jobs that nobody wants to do and you guys are absolutely wonderful. So thank you. You're welcome.
Anyone else with questions? Well, someone have a motion perhaps?
I do. I move to allow Green Waters Park Community Building to be used and be swayed for the warming center this winter from December through March, from From December through March, from six P M. To seven A M on nights when it's. Not already reserved and is forecasted to be below freezing.
Second. Okay, motion made by Counselor Kenyon, second by Counselor Terman. Any discussion?
I have one more question. What is the temperature? Is it thirty-two degrees?
Thirty-two, okay.
Discussion.
I have a comment, actually. I really debated about bringing this up, but I felt it was relevant. And I wanted to start by saying thank you to all the volunteers of the warming center. I wholeheartedly believe in your cause. At our last meeting, our mayor chose to ridicule and chastise the majority of our counselors, accusing them of carrying favor to the cause of the weak. And ignoring our city's financial crisis. There were references to some counselors happily spending other people's monies and turning blind eyes to critical projects. Such as the Green Waters Bridge. I find these comments not only unprofessional but unnecessary. The communication breakdown in this council and what constitutes as an acceptable fee waiver has become a catalyst. For counterproductive conversation which is felt through this community. For instance, here we have the warming center asking for a fee waiver to use Ring Waters Community Building. Our mayor may not want it to be referred to as a fee waiver, but in fact, when any group of volunteers requests to use this building, it is and always has been considered as such. They're asking to give shelter to unhoused yet non-taxpaying citizens during time where the weather falls below freezing temperatures. And this is for an undisclosed number of days due to our unpredictable winters and the unknown, unknown financial impact. Last year, the total number of days waived was fifty and this number constitutes the loss of four thousand dollars in revenue with an additional two thousand dollars. In necessary additional insurance, insurance which comes out of our general funds. As referenced in our mayor's comments during the last session, he stated that this council is refusing to take action to increase revenue or significantly decrease expenditure. And this topic ironically addresses both issues. This program, as necessary as it is on a humanitarian level, comes to a great expense to the city by way of insurance, electricity for lights and costly heaters running all night. As well as water, sewer and garbage sewer services. In my opinion, we can't, if we can't mutually agree to waive the fees for our children's community events and activities, all of which were a total of seven collective days. Of rental fees, using the building for no more than three to four hours at a time. I don't see how we can waive the fees for non-residents regardless of the circumstances. The fact that most of these kids belong to taxpaying residents alone stands, stands to consider the merit of our votes. I believe wholeheartedly again in these causes, including the warming center. And so many of their activities and needs would go without unless these fee waivers or at least reduced fees are given. The fact that the warming center is requested by far the largest fee waiver we give, I believe this council needs to put more weight behind its decision. With that, I'm asking council, consider this topic to be tabled until an agreement can be made within council. On how to address these items with mutual respect, empathy, and with the idea that we are here for this community.
I encourage you to reread the code of conduct about personal attacks on counselors.
Directly quoting, I actually have the transcript.
In any case. I'm sorry.
I said in any case.
You can speak when you're told. Thank you.
I felt like it was my turn to speak. I was responding to you.
Plenty of times. Thank you. So I butted heads with James, who obviously had some conversations outside of this about the way he structured this agenda bill as a fee waiver. That I believe there's no five oh one C three behind this effort. There's no nonprofit, there's no for-profit. This is the city sponsoring a warming center for safety of life of people. And with that, we buy in to providing housing and providing insurance, the full monty. Whereas any other rental, on the back, it says at certain points you will provide. Insurance with the city named as additionally insured. So this is a city effort. It's not something that requires a fee waiver. But however you want to do it, we'll, we'll go ahead with, with this agenda item as written. I fully support the warming center and I fully support their operations as asked for by, by the group. If any volunteer was hurt in the warming center, who do you think would pay that liability? The city. Okay, so it's something the city has sponsored. There's no one else behind it. We're not going to go after. Ms. Kathy Holston, if something happens, it's going to come to the city. So it's a city project. And that was my point. So with that, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
You didn't ask for more discussion.
I gave everyone an opportunity to discuss and I wrapped it up.
You actually commented to me and then went right into yours, just to point the border. Sorry.
Does someone have anything else to say then? Is there more discussion?
Did we have a new motion on the approval?
There's no motion. There's one still on the table. You can't make another motion when there's one on the table unless it's an amendment.
Bringing up the point is. I do.
I'm sorry.
I think, I think Kelly is absolutely right. We really, you're bringing up something that is completely different. I absolutely love the warming center. I, I do not think you are a committee of the city. In fact, I remember when Kathy was mayor, we talked about this and Kathy. Explicitly said that the volunteers of the warming center are their own group. They are not volunteers of the city. We talked about this, so.
And we volunteer for.
For the city?
Yes.
For the city?
Yes.
Yeah, same, same is true. Yeah, same is true. Remember we had the park cleanup. We had people come out, help clean up the park. We had people.
But when did it become a city, a city? Committee or?
It's a, it's a gray area, same as our holiday light parade.
I mean, I volunteered for the warming center for a few winters and never signed the. They were saying to volunteer for it for the city to do so.
For the warming center?
Yeah.
We never, we never had a volunteer than the WAC since we came to the, and it's only because. The community center in Greenwater Park is part of the city. The WAC, it was part of the city, but it was never, you know, like it was a volunteer organization. And the community department can't be underestimated. I think we, as, as a person. And I want to make sure to ban it.
I agree wholeheartedly where my intention is, is when did it be. Turned into a city thing and the concern that I have with that is. Is let's say Kathy decides to move to Colorado and. Some of the other volunteers decide they're not interested in volunteering anymore. Who does it then become the responsibility of keep it going? I know this council is very busy with. Our own business, with our meetings that we're on and, and in other ways helping out the community. I would feel uncomfortable if it became our responsibility to manage the warming center. If for any reason, the, the volunteers in, in the community just couldn't pull together and make it happen. So I feel like that's a conversation that should have happened. Before it just became decided that all the community members, I mean, all of the volunteers would be. Assigning city waivers to volunteer for a committee that was member a city ordained committee.
Asked to fill out forms because we're part of the committee. We were asked to fill out forms because we're volunteering to do a service on city property.
Right.
We're not a committee. We never have been a committee of the city. Except, but like someone who volunteers to do freelance. And wants to do something, we ask, the city typically asks them to fill out a volunteer because they're volunteering their services. They're not a committee or they're not a formed committee. Where are they going to ask the council to start pulling leads? When we had someone else, when Kent Docrave was, was taking care of this, he moved away and the volunteers stepped in. When he was doing it, it was never considered, it was always a volunteer committee.
Right. And we never signed volunteer forms for the city as you pointed out.
But when we, when we moved to WAC because we're the. Green Waters Park, because we were using Green Waters Park's facility. We felt that we were asked to fill out a volunteer form because we're volunteering. We're not volunteering for a committee. We're volunteering to do.
Okay, I understand that completely. Excuse me for using the word committee. I was just trying to find a word to use to summarize. That the volunteers for the warming center are not actually part of. Any city committees. Okay, so, but. Pointing out that it became that way when it went to the Green Waters Park. Makes no sense considering the WAC has been a city business for however many hundreds of years.
Regardless of whether it makes sense or not, that's not what our request is.
I understand.
If you're not comfortable, the way things make sense, I would suggest we figure that out on your own time.
I think it's a council business that needs to be set.
And I would really like to be able to, to let our volunteers know where we'll be, where we'll be some.
So you're throwing your motion?
Yeah, I'm going to withdraw.
Is there another motion to be made?
I'll move to table this discussion.
Until when?
Until. What is, what date are we at right now? So this is the second meeting. So November second.
So here a second on this tabling motion. A motion made by Counselor Kenyon, second by Counselor Coker. Any discussion? Any other discussion?
I just want to let the warming committee know our group volunteers know that I definitely. Support what you do and do want to see you have the space available. I think we just need to work out the details.
As I do as well. The details just.
Please, please be recognized before you start talking. Any other discussion? All right, well, and we're taping this motion. I had no issues with the motion. I was ready to vote on that motion. But here we are tabling a safety of life initiative to, for political reasons. Regardless of whether they've signed the volunteer form or not, they had not signed it. Where do you think they would come if a liability issue occurred? They would come to the city. So I have no idea why we're tabling this. However, the motions are made and seconded and that motion is to table this eleven point three until November second. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Abstain.
Counselor Charman. Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum.
Name.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
All right, motion to table passes on to. Eleven point two, Oak Ridge Trails Alliance O I P lease proposal. James?
All right, as most folks probably know, the GOES, the Royal Oak Ridge Area Trail Stewards dissolve and.
Pointing the border. I'm sorry that it's really hard for me to hear you when we have conversations going on in the room. Wanted to wait until that was done. Thank you.
All right, the GOES organization dissolved earlier this year, mistaken over by the Oak Ridge Trails Alliance, or O T A. With a show of hands who is here tonight. So it's a new organization, same general goals of increasing access to trails and moving trails throughout the Oak Ridge area. So the lease, which was expiring anyway, expired, which goes, needs to be renewed. It is currently six hundred dollars a month. This is one of the. Units in our flex building. It has been proposed that we reduce that to five hundred dollars a month instead of six hundred in exchange for. The Oak Ridge Trails Alliance agreeing to reestablish and maintain. All the trails in the O I P around the ponds, et cetera, which is pretty overgrown as folks may have noticed. So that's the exchange, another new charity organization and. And this will be kind of similar to what we have agreed to with the disco, of course. The disco club, they, they take care of the entire park there, the public in exchange for. And not having. A. Fees to use that park. Same sort of idea when we were talking about three dollars a month, a reduced rent for this exchange. So. Public Works supports this. I support this. Part of our. Milk Park Master Plan, the Parks Master Plan and our. To increase visitors and developing their farm. That is the proposal.
Right, so here a motion on this.
To move to allow the C A to draft a new lease with the Oak Ridge Trails Alliance. For five hundred dollars per month in exchange for the O T A agreeing to reestablish and maintain the O I P trails.
We hear a second.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Kenyon, second by Counselor Hollitt. Any discussion or questions of James on this or questions in general? Okay, James, just one, a couple of things. If in that agreement, you could define exactly which trails are going to be maintained. And frequency of abatement for the grounds. All right, there's no further questions. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Bjornson.
Bye.
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
Counselor Charman.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
State Bureau.
Hi.
All right, motion passes on to eleven point four, Union Pacific Rear Road Issues. From the Parks and Services Committee. Is this Rick? Is this you or is this? Counselor Terman.
So this came up ahead. Well, so in our Parks and Services meeting, we've had a few people come and ask about quiet zones through Oak Ridge. And also, I've had a lot of people come to me about the idle trains and they've asked what we can do to. Get them to not sit there idle for months of time. I looked in the Union Pacific's operations procedures and they do have, they do have procedures regarding this. I believe it's. If it's going idle for more than two hours, they're supposed to turn it off and then start it back up. There are some. There, there are some caveats due to freezing temperatures because the trains are so large, they don't use antifreeze. They just have water in them. So if it's going to be freezing, they have to leave running. They do, Union Civic has told me, they do have. Retrofitted kits to either make it electric where they can plug it in, keep it warm. Or little gas powered motors that retrofit onto the equipment. Do the idling, these trains idle, they burn about seven gallons an hour while idling of diesel. And so what we're asking is for James, because I've tried speaking with Union Pacific, but. This is for his counselor. They, you know, as a single entity, not very keen on listening to me. But I think as a municipality will have a better chance of helping. People of our community get the change it might see. All Union Civic to follow your own process and procedures.
Right, and James, you have, your recommendation is?
Well, there's a, there's a couple of issues here. So I have concerns about the quiet zone just because it is taking a city. So I have concerns about the quiet zone, just because it is taking a city, you mean, five years and millions of dollars. Uh, to establish their quiet zone. There, there is an issue that even if we do have a quiet zone. I, I think Rick can help me with this, it, it would only be up to a certain point where it's city limits and then.
Yes, the only quiet zones that we can, uh. Recommended in force are within our jurisdiction. So what they mean is that's in Hill Street. Crossing. Um, Rogers Lane Crossing. To the east with. Yes, the next opportunity to, uh, blow their horn. So they're also allowed to blow their horn about quarter miles back from the crossing. So if you back that up, back towards Hill Street, that would put you five hundred feet to East Hill Street, which what that really means is the quiet zone is. Running. And, um, that is my biggest issue is. It's success, if we didn't invest money into it. We would not be successful unless we had Lake County Parking with us, and they, of course, on their jurisdiction parts as well. And then, of course, there is the cost. Around the quiet zone study, just our study, um, as I put in the, um, agenda bill, this is in our T S D. Um, and just the study is twenty five thousand dollars, and then that identifies the needed equipment. That U P would then ask us to, uh, pay for, and that can be anywhere between three hundred thousand, five hundred thousand. Or just the, uh, four quadrant arms, so that's arms of over all eight, right now we have two quadrant, so it would be a set of arms. And then a basic running activation, activation system, which is another hundred eighty five, one thousand, so really what that means is. For very limited success, we are estimating five hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand dollars, granted those are Union Civic numbers, um. Nonetheless, even if those are cut in half, it's still pretty expensive for a very limited short. Stopping it going to the force, right, but now if you're talking about the air quality, I did want to comment it. If it went five, if, as well, so, um, I absolutely support getting the idling piece under control. If possible, but blowing the horns, I don't think it's something that we have the money for, for the. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so just to be clear, so the, the way it works, if we eventually get this approved, which they, yours. The city is responsible for paying to upgrade the crossing systems, not for the railroad.
Okay, so here a motion on this?
Um, I will, I move that the staff. Oh, excuse me, I move that we have an attorney request protocols and procedures. For city review on idling trains within an urban environment.
I hear a second. A motion made by Council Brewer, seconded by Council Hollitt. Any questions, if anyone, Council Kenyon?
Um, I wonder why it is that we would need to have the city attorney. Request information, isn't it? Information that might be available just by. Looking it up somewhere on our own.
Yes, I mean, this is a recommendation coming from the, uh, Parks. Minutes, since they're recommended.
And it does have. The idea that Parks Community Services Committee had that discussion was, uh, the term, city attorney would hold more weight, it would put it more on notice, that's the issue with. Whether or not they do that, uh, is.
Is it?
But that was the idea. As around who was the, it was came from the attorney, who would expect a better response.
Request protocols and procedures for. City review on the trains, I, I'm just assuming that those would exist somewhere already, like. Like the ones that he already looked up.
Yeah, it was on the webpage, I think the intent is to get it officially from them, sent to us. Not just. If, if I'm just blind.
I just don't know how that would have any, uh, more weight than. I mean, if the attorney was to send them a letter that said, hey. We read your protocols. And the city feels that they're not being followed within the city limits of Oak Ridge. That might have some weight. But just requesting the. The document that gives the rules seems kind of like. Uh, waste, wasting expense on a city attorney.
Yeah, Council Coker.
And has anyone reached out to Jeremy Wood and asked to speak to somebody higher up?
I did.
And?
I spoke to their, um, public relations officer that's up in Portland.
And didn't get anywhere, I mean.
I there, I called him. Maybe thirty times, I emailed him. This is what, before our city council, I emailed him about twenty times, never got a response. Now I talked to Jeremy Woods and Jeremy Woods. He's the one who gave me the info.
Okay.
For the.
I, I was, I was just curious.
You have a discussion? Jack, could you call for a vote, please?
First Charman.
Aye.
Council Kenyon.
Nay.
Council Coker.
Nay.
Mayor Ketchum.
Aye.
Council Brewer.
Aye.
Council Yarson.
Nay.
Council Hollitt.
Aye. Why?
Aye.
What was that, Jackie, I didn't?
It was three, four, or.
Four, three? Motion passes. All right, moving on to eleven point five TV but discussion, James?
Mayor. All right, uh, two city councillors have, uh, requested that council discuss the new tools development, we will view as a rock board. Consider selecting a subcommittee of leading councils to draft. Uh, a new letter of opposition for council's, council's future consideration. Calling a new letter of opposition because one was issued by this council back in two thousand twenty one, a copy of which is attached. To the agenda bill. I.
Okay, I hear a motion on this?
I move to appoint up to three counselors to draft a new letter of opposition. To the development of TVU as a rock quarry for council's future consideration.
I'll second that.
Right, motion made by Council Brewer, same by Council Coker, uh, discussion, questions? Of council? Go ahead.
I was one of the counselors that brought us to James, um, I asked that our letter. Be pulled up, um. Mayor, former mayor Holston was here, myself and Council Kenyon. Worked together on a letter to the county commissioners, I thought it was well written. Um, it went to the commissioners in opposition, obviously, but, um, I thought it was, um, just a, a really good move to, um. You know, put our stamp of opposition on it, and I hope that either our council would consider either, um. You know, sending the same letter and saying we still feel the same way. Or writing a new similar letter with maybe some more facts added to it, because some things have changed, um, I've talked to Linda McMahon a little bit, she's kind of. One of the, she is one of the leaders, um, in the group, so, um, maybe even working with some community leaders that are. Working on this and putting a new letter together, so either way, I just think that the commissioners need to hear from. City leaders, I realize it's outside of our jurisdiction, but I think this is a big deal.
Right. Unless there are any counselors interested in joining up, uh, as a group of three in writing.
Melissa's right on here.
Okay.
I just had a comment.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Council Yarson.
Yeah, I just wanted to state that, uh, my position from our two thousand and twenty one letter is the same, I think. Um, we should still be in opposition and, um. I like the way the letter was written, I think it was well done. Um, so at least resend that letter, I agree with that.
Well, Council Brewer, you made that motion, are you happy with it, or do you would you like to just say resend the letter, or?
Um, I think that maybe we can include both letters, we can write a new one and show that this is something we've already touched on with. Previous administrations, and I think that it will hold even more weight in the sender, because the first one was well written, agreed.
So right now, I have Council Holland, Council Brewer have volunteered, Council Yarson, did you want to help write the letter, or is that just a comment?
If nobody else is available, I'd be willing.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? So I think, check me if I'm wrong here, Council Brewer, it's going to be, I move to appoint counselors Hollitt, Yarson and Brewer. To draft a new letter of oppositions to development of TVB to as a rock quarry for the council's future consideration, you give it that?
Yes.
And that was, uh, seconded by Council Coker, you did?
Yes, I did.
All right, Jack, could you call for a vote, please? Aye.
Aye.
Council Charman.
Aye.
Council Yarson.
Aye.
Council Kenyon.
Aye.
Council Coker.
Aye.
Council Brewer.
Aye.
All right, motion passes, uh, eleven point six, holiday light parade fee waiver request, James?
The annual holiday light parade, um, scheduled for Saturday, December ninth. Is being organized again this year by Council Hollitt. And the fire department of volunteers. This year they'd like to do a little bit different, rather than ending your on first street, uh, they'd like to end at Green Waters Park. By ending at Green Waters Park and using the amphitheater community building, it's technically a fee waiver request. But they are using. Uh, city property that we would want to rent out, so I have been consistent by calling a sixty waiver request, as I did last year. Same with the warming center, I called it a waiver request last year, this year. Um, they're not requesting any actual money for the event, yes, they are soliciting donations. Public to purchase cookies, I've talked about that kind of thing, to end the event. But they definitely needed the waiver request to use the amphitheater. And, uh, community building at the end of the parade.
Okay, so I hear a motion on this?
I move to table this item until November second.
I'll second.
All right, motions to table this item to November second, and Council Brewer, second. Any discussion on this?
Some discussion, that's okay, so the idea behind it, thank you for starting that off, James, um, the. Fire department has traditionally done the, um, light parade, I think this is the fifteenth year, and. As everyone knows, we had a, um, accident last year, not with our vehicle, but a pedestrian, so we are trying to, James is working on a new parade ordinance, and. In that consideration, I'd like to end the parade at Green Waters Park, as he suggested, and also like to open it up to allowing some Christmas caroling. Um, using the stage for that, some of the things that we actually had wanted to do, but we don't have the space here, um. Inviting the scouts, and, um, I actually talked to dogs of hour, but they, um, are going to be in the parade this year. And, um, just some other holiday activities and making up that ending place with the vehicles lined up with lights on them and just kind of a. A gathering of different holiday events, sorts.
Okay, Council Kenyon?
With the, um, tree lighting, we have name in court in conjunction with it.
Not on the same day, no, the tree lighting, they are going to do that the first weekend, and it's going to be the new.
What?
Oh.
Prescribed.
Hasn't the tree lighting in the past been part of the whole ceremony?
Only in the last three to four years, it's been a part of that, and Mayor Houston, his mayor, kind of became.
You have two trees that have lights on them at Green Waters Park on both sides of the stage, which will be the, uh. Yeah, the parade. So.
So will there be dogs? There are a lot of things happening in the popcorn area on the first Friday, anyway, so it does work in really well, they actually wanted to have the tree lighting part of. Their events, and last year this kind of did a. Um, what would you call it, James, you did a quick little lighting for them?
Yeah, we turned them on that night, then. Turned them off for the next.
Yeah. So they started, there still is a tree lighting.
Any other questions on the tabling of this motion? All right, Jackie, do you call for a vote, please?
Council Brewer.
Aye.
Council Kenyon.
Aye.
Council Hollitt.
Aye.
Mayor Tom. Council Charman.
Yes. Nay.
What did you say?
Nay.
Mayor Ketchum.
No.
Council Yarson.
Aye.
Council Brewer.
Aye.
All right, motion passes, uh, item twelve is business from the city administrator. Twelve point one, but first I'm going to ask the council if they would mind extending for fifteen minutes. Anyone? Not okay, okay?
Um, I actually am. Concerned that we probably have more than fifteen minutes worth, do we want to consider extending longer or reducing? The quantity of stuff that's left on the agenda.
Yeah, can you make that decision in fifteen minutes?
Yeah.
All right, James, twelve point one, holiday party discussion?
Yeah, just, just requesting a little more guidance from council regarding the city holiday party, which is scheduled for Saturday, December sixteen. Going early in the evening, um. Basically raining and the chamber, I. If they are prepared to, uh, have the awards paid for by these organizations. If that's, there are, so it's no cost to the city. Yes, I just wanted to. Make sure that was okay to give these awards.
What did they want?
Uh, we said in the last council meeting, so, um. City employee of the year, uh, same as city. Uh, business of the year, and business owner of the year, that businesses give back to the community. Awards, we're reducing, using. Um, and volunteer leader. It just looks like they got a committee member that you're. Awarded. I'm, I'm sorry, I should have, uh, should have put these. Agenda vote from that last meeting, it could, they say the same, basically, so do we want to do the award?
Did the motion have, uh, an award? Statement in there?
It did, um. But council decided not to take that part, council approved the date. And said they wanted to table the other issues, the award issues.
All right, uh, is there a motion to be made about proving for awards at the holiday party?
It was also the amount, because it happened to be the same, meaning that, um, the boys scouts were denied a eighty dollar fee. And the dogs of hour was denied a small fee too, so most people, yes. People here had felt like, um, it would be. Didn't set well to, to spend a grand on a holiday party when we wouldn't allow the boys scouts and dogs of hour to use them. On the center, excuse me, the Green Waters Building.
Yeah, so we already have a thousand dollars budgeted, already in the budget, so I'm going to use that, I was asking for another two hundred dollars, um, I'm just taking upon myself to. Get another two hundred dollars from our, um, marked. Funds. Get up to that twelve hundred. Flexing my power as a city administrator, um, so funding, you don't have to worry about that. It just went out, we wanted to do.
Make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the C A to have an awards ceremony at the Christmas party on Saturday the sixteenth.
All right, motion was made, Council Brewer, you're a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Terman. Any discussion? Please.
I'm apologizing ahead of time, I wasn't able to. Sit down and rewatch the last meeting where this was discussed, and I was obviously not at that meeting. But I'm very concerned about the mention of. The city. Authorizing. At our, at our holiday party where we are, I'm assuming we're doing what we did last year where we. It's a appreciation of volunteers.
It was an appreciation of volunteers.
Are we, is that the same plan for this year and and staff for the holiday party?
Yeah, I think a combination, but also the awards part of it.
So my concern is that we would be making awards to businesses.
Well, it's not very good business. It's businesses to give back to the community. So there's a community aspect. My idea of really committing is that they're going to pay for the gift baskets, so we can actually give someone something. Right, you know, etc., that all bring to the city, so the employee of the year will get a little something. And they break. It was obvious.
I'm going to ask a question. Are, are all businesses in Oak Ridge being considered for us? Not just chambers? And how are they being considered? Who's making the decisions?
Uh, the chamber and rain are working together to nominate and arrest the community to look at the nominee.
And what are the? How, how would a business qualify to be considered for a nomination?
It's civic contributions to the community. So not just a business that is serving the community with service that they sell, but a business that is actually giving back in other types of ways. And the idea was to really reward those people who are business owners. Who give so much for our community, contribute to their volunteerism or by utilizing business resources to contribute to other goodwill in the and a lot of us, our business owners are also blessing that to volunteer or many other things in the community. I think the idea was like, it's a civic award ceremony, so it's people who work directly with the city as the lead members or volunteering with parks, but also recognizing that this is a greater community, we're all in the city and that we can recognize some of those contributions as well.
Good, thank you.
Any other discussion on this?
I just have one thing. I was really involved in the party last year. I really liked the idea of it being a volunteer appreciation party for all committees and I think maybe it would be nice to broaden it more this year that maybe even some committees that aren't necessarily city committees, but that help out the city. But for me, I personally don't like the idea of it being an award ceremony. I personally prefer it be more of a party to appreciate everybody. So my vote will probably be minimal. That's why I just wanted to let everybody know why I feel that way.
Councillor Kenyon.
So actually, that's a really good point that you just brought up. So we should be inviting all of the volunteers for the warming center and every other community related volunteer organization.
Same, yeah.
So how is, how big is that going to get?
We want to show up.
Yeah.
That's the word, Mary. It's a season.
Where are we holding the party doing now?
The bowling.
I like to help in participating and making sure that everyone's invited that needs to be.
Anything else? Any other discussion? All right, so the motion was to allow the CA to present awards at the holiday party recognizing individual
Yeah.
people and businesses. All right. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yeah.
Hi.
Council Brewer.
Hi.
Council Bjarnson.
Nay.
Council Tomlin.
Hi.
Council Hollitt.
Nay.
Council Coker.
Hi.
Council Kenyon.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. On to fourteen point two, that's ordinance nine forty-three.
I actually do have other city businesses.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Um. First, I just real quickly, I want to put those out because the public works, this league has been very crazy for them. We've got the Cherry City project going on, they're helping with major water project on Third Street. A water main break on clone yesterday, which was a hot break, being they had to get into the water, fix that. And they're still dealing with broken pipe at Green Waters Park. And I wanted to let people know we're still at least a couple of weeks out on that. That tight broke due to the ODOT subcontractor accidentally breaking pipe on the bridge. And now we're waiting for the ODOT engineers to come up with a plan on how they want to fix that. So we're waiting, holding pattern on that. Sorry, folks, in the rest area, it's waiting on ODOT. The construction of rehab of the amphitheater has started. Council, remember that we expected we might find some dry rot. Well, unfortunately, we found a lot of dry rot. Including on the two main posts that hold up the entire thing, which is going to require a change order. We're still putting that together, but because rain is coming, we're going to need to approve that as soon as possible. Couldn't bring that to you today. So I'm suggesting a special session of city council on Tuesday at five P M. To review that issue of the change order on the amphitheater construction, this is obviously the, we need to get the council ready because the officials, right, more details to follow. Yeah.
Kenyon.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to consider. I mean, uh, make a motion to approve up to ten thousand dollars from TRT funds for the Green Waters Park Amphitheater.
That might, I don't know if we have enough to TRT.
I believe I read it was twenty-nine thousand at this point. Up to.
Right. I don't think that I probably.
Oh.
No, no. Pretty substantial. Yeah, you'll, you'll see the pictures. We just couldn't get everything ready.
Okay.
Yeah, but you can stick your finger to the post that's supposed to be holding up the entire building times four, four.
That's incredible. Okay, I would draw.
Okay, anything else, James?
That's just making sure that that's okay to break to divide beyond.
Um.
Conflicts.
Five P M. Might be a conflict for me. It's your seven.
We have another committee member, uh, of safety against states.
Okay, then I just won't participate.
Any other, any others that conflicts that time? Yeah. All right. James, uh, we've got five minutes left. You want to postpone the ordinance?
I think, yeah.
Okay, and as well as the staff updates?
I don't know if it's necessarily necessary to post on there because they've been provided.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Um, so given that, we'll go to other business. I'm sorry.
We, we skipped over TV view and we haven't come back to it, right?
No, we did. Yeah, we sure did.
I'm so sorry that.
We made the motion, actually, I think.
Because I'm just, you volunteered.
I never voted with me. I was thinking like more of discussions with Michelle here now and so it was like in my head, there was still more.
She's got everybody on her side.
Time to go. This group is covered it.
Oh, good.
Okay, uh, we'll go on to public comments. Any public comment in the room?
I respect it. I just wanted to tell the councillor that the individuals that you were talking about are actually citizens of this town. Yes, they have an address here and they have voting privileges here. So please do not say, as you said, they are not citizens because they are to ignore them is just wrong. Also, I, I don't want to get into the, the whole thing about your your deductions or whatever. That's not the issue. There is a time and a place to bring these up, councillor Brewer. When you want to bring up something new, put it on the agenda, bring it up and do another agenda item. Don't hijack an I G N, an G N, that's already there for your own benefit. Just a word of caution, to define that in your rules of parliamentary procedure, please read them to the whole council. Don't say out loud, I support you, and then follow it up with your vote.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Um.
Yes, I have.
Mr. Barkley.
Dan Barkley, four seven five oh one, highway fifty-eight. Quick comment, question, whatever for councillor Brewer specifically. Are you sure this is exactly your fourth meeting? Your acumen and professional conduct far, far exceeds many on this council and previous councils, in my opinion, for somebody with four meetings, good job. Say the course. And as far as professional conduct, I, you know, from the pinot gallery, I didn't hear anything where there was a personal attack on another council member or calling in to question anybody else, but your own code, code, code of conduct, paragraph three specifically, hello, I have the floor, Noreen.
Okay, sorry.
Specifically says, everyone shall refrain from abusive conduct, verbal attacks upon the character or motives of other members of the city council, boards, commissions, committees, staff, volunteers, or the public. Isn't it interesting that the individual that points out coded conduct, councillor Brewer routinely, routinely violates. There's a lot of ways to show disrespect to other councillors. Abusive conduct, verbal attacks, or questioning the motives, like, you know, some councillors wanted a couple events brought back to the table. It wasn't a couple, it was five. And, you know, before, before any of you, you know, give advice out, maybe you should read the code of conduct for yourselves and follow that advice. I was unable to attend the last meeting, but the two before that sat here and witnessed councillor Hollitt being treated like a child. I believe councillor Kenyon, the meeting before, it routinely happens. It's a friggin zoo. And you are the face of Oak Ridge, available to anybody with an internet connection. Be mindful of your behavior and keep it professional and a lot less childish and get rid of the tantrums on, you put on display. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Jackie, can you see the other? And just?
One is true. Looks like Noreen.
Uh, let's see, Mr. Mike Hunt. Ms. Hammond.
Hi, Trudy Hammond, still in Oak Ridge. Um, my question, I was hoping for my question to be answered this evening. And the question from the first public comment was, why was there a councillor that being denied twice for a, a seat as a councillor for the ODAT committee? Personally, I think that the individual would be a great councillor for that seat, but I'm wondering why are the votes no for that individual to be the council seat for the ODAT? And can I get an answer this evening? From those who voted no?
It's not back and forth in public comment, unfortunately. I, I'm sure the city administrator can get you up to speed on the actual agenda item when it, when it happened.
Thanks.
Okay, any other comments?
Reese had.
He had two was on there.
All right.
There is a view button on the upper right-hand corner, top right corner, there's a view.
Yeah, I'm going to go over here.
My hand would be at the top anyway, so I don't see anybody there. All right, motion to adjourn.
I saw move.
All right, media adjourned. Eight seventeen.